Our Thursday, April 2nd, 2020 meeting to order. Would you all join me in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. We again have a short agenda and it probably will remain such until we kind of understand where all this is going and how long we're looking. But future meetings, we probably begin to have discussions on budget projects and that type of thing. All right, let's do budget adjustments. There's one, twenty-five million dollars.
That's a good one.
Increase in revenue.
I just like to see increase in revenue.
Yeah, that's always a good one.
Would there be a motion to approve budget adjustments?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Wonderful. Further discussion? Hearing none. Christie, would you call the roll, please?
Jeff Myers?
Yes.
Bob Haskett?
Yes.
Glenn Miller?
Yes. Budget adjustments have been approved. And while we're waiting for...
The operator to get caught up. He's a little slow.
Let's stay.
Let's stay.
And for those that are on the phone conference, we use our one TV screen here in our meeting room to show the budget adjustments that we approved with our accounting system. And then we do a printout of it that goes into, which also we are required to keep a hard copy of in the commissioner's journal. Okay, the next item is then and now. Okay.
That's what we get the fare.
Fare.
Need to show me.
Fare.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the agreed additional.
For this year.
To help the Fair Board.
Yeah, yeah.
A Fair Board match at grant.
Yeah.
And what the other, Christie, for the junior Fair Board is twenty-eight hundred that we give them.
Every year.
Normally.
Normally, we give them seven thousand instead of thirty.
Yeah, right, right.
Correct.
Right. Got that?
Yep.
Okay.
And the Fair Board has a project right now, I don't remember what it was.
Wasn't it lighting?
Something. And they were getting a grant and wanted to know if we could support them that way. And we have a history supporting like that. It's usually one time, this grant, it's not, no, it's not going to be in your budget next year.
Yeah, right.
And that's with the airport, they had roughly, we'll round it, a two-million-dollar grant. And it was a hundred percent from the FAA, which very, that only happens once in probably sixty, seventy years. So we advanced the airport authority a hundred and sixty thousand dollars so they could pay for getting the plans finalized and documents ready for them. And once they receive, begin to receive money back from the FAA, will be reimbursed. But I didn't think that was too bad to...
No.
Loan out a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to leverage two million? That's not bad.
No, that was, that was...
It's bad, ain't it?
Yep. Yeah, that was, that was a big deal.
Now, I was blue.
Yeah.
Your call. I guess he said, hey. Now we're on the list.
Wow.
Can you get it done this year? I hope we can. Somebody turn it away. And the engineering forum that works for the airport told me that. It's really, really sad. When I was on the airport board, I think I got to work with them a couple of years and was off the board and had time to be on anymore. And made a lot, it was a great team for the airport.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve then and now?
I will make that motion.
I will second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Christie?
Jeff Myers?
Yes.
Bob Haskett?
Yes.
Glenn Miller?
Yes. Then and now have been approved. Hold on there, now we have bills yet. Because I didn't do any today.
Did you?
No, I didn't, I didn't have time to get to it. That brings us to the end of what we had published on our agenda. For tomorrow, on Friday, April 3rd, is County Commissioners Association webinar. Do you remember what that's about, Christie?
About COVID pay and family.
Seriously? It's about COVID, is it?
Surprise!
It's a snide remark. She's not snarky.
I was gonna say, S-N-A-R-K-Y, snarky. And I know anybody that will watch this, if anybody ever does, will listen as well. There's a lot of backstory.
Yeah.
It is. How did you come up with that?
So with that, Christie, do you have anything else?
No, I do not. I do have a letter there, kind of look over for the landfill.
Would you send that to Glenn? Because I asked, what Christie is referring to is an acknowledgement and a release for those that are working on the litter roundup. And I had a conversation with Mike Inbrock earlier in the week of the direction we should go, and that includes electronics roundup, which I suggested be canceled. There is, it looks like, not knowing what the governor's going to do, which he's probably going to possibly cancel school for the rest of the year and use systems learning. Whether we should do the electronic roundup because it puts people too close together. And he and I were talking about the litter roundup. But we'll need to send this, send this to Glenn. I don't know where it came from, whether it was produced out there or at the landfill or whether one of the prosecutors at the time did. So Christie, if you just send that, send that to Glenn, I would appreciate that. Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Looking at Tuesday for April 7th, we've got Mike Inbrock phone conference, Cameron Carrier, the same ZI phone conference.
Correct.
She has, since she has little children, real little children.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Not very open, I don't, I... And it's nothing we can't do, can't do over.
No, I think we can do it.
If he gets us, he gets us, we have the matching documentation and in the order that he wants to go through, it will be, it will be really easy. We have been offered an opportunity to use OSU Extension's Zoom account. And that was presented to the, through the County Commissioners Association yesterday at their board conference call. And the way this is supposed to work, we're to contact our local OSU Extension, which I sent Laura Garth an email, and Laura said she would get back sometime after eleven. This opens up a lot of resources to all eighty-eight counties. Some are, some are using Zoom, you know, pure Henry County, the Health Department is. But the amount and the capabilities that OSU Extension has will be much greater than what we would ever have available to us. So we'll have further detail and hopefully that might be putting this out on the web. Video wise, much easier. Jeff, do you have anything else?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. I don't know, did, Bob, do you have anything?
No, everything's normal. I checked in with the CCNO yesterday, we had a conference call, and everything's running pretty normal there. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, so then our meeting will be later this month.
On the EOC side here at the county, getting a lot of requests that we just can't fulfill because there just isn't the stuff any longer. And Henry County is a distribution point for the Northwest Council of Hospitals or the Northwest Ohio Hospital Council and some other groups. And even though in our storage area or warehouse area, it looked like we had a lot of stuff we really get down to.
That's getting used to it.
We need even more stuff. We don't have that. So we're struggling, waiting for the state and the feds to help come up with a solution to get everyone the amount of PPEs or the personal protection equipment that they desire. Looking at other alternatives to extend the use of these items, but we're waiting for further developments there. Also... Okay, let me think about it for a second. I had an email from a citizen about a centennial celebration. Yesterday was our Henry County's two-hundredth birthday. It was established when in effect by Ohio revised code, and we revised code on April 1, eighteen-twenty. And so that's pretty exciting, exciting for the county. I know there's events planned. Don't have a whole lot of detail. I don't know how this, COVID, how COVID's going to impact. But it may be something that some of the stuff can be pushed into the fall. Or fair time, if we do have a fair, I, you know, there's just right now too many unknowns.
Yeah.
But I think if we still look at it, and I don't know, would you be interested in kind of writing heard on that, Jeff? I held, I held in January a meeting just to kind of get a feeling from Henry County Historical Society, and had Joel Miller there and Brian from the paper. Todd Coward from Press News came over. And just wanted, I just wanted a small group to talk to see what, you know, the chamber's thinking, what the historical society's thinking. And the email I got is from one of the other historical societies, I believe, in the county, if I understood correctly. And was asking why they weren't invited, kind of what's going on. If you would, would you get a hold of Tom Jenny with Henry County Historical Society?
Yep.
And Joel? And maybe you want to do this at conference level?
Okay.
And see what they're saying.
Gotcha. I'll do that, I'll let you help.
And if they're still making plans, I'll write, I will write heard on this, on this COVID thing, if you want to go ahead. So really, when I met with those, it ended up five people, really had nothing in mind. Was, we need to do something. We've seen Bob and Deb and Paul and I attended Pauline County's kickoff. It was fourteen, fourteen, fourteen counties established, it done on April 1, eighteen-twenty. And they had, and one of their churches had, the governor was there, you know, as a kickoff.
It was very nice.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was really nice. And the speakers spoke, spoke just the right amount of time. And it may be something, once, you know, if we want to, we want to do some kind of event. The governor loves to do this stuff, so it'd kind of be planning around his schedule. But...
Easy as to say you won't do anything right now.
No. No, well, we couldn't.
Yeah.
You know, we're in North, North...
Look, yeah, right, right.
But Deb and Deb would be, it's something I've been thinking about, but again, nothing special in mind. You know, there's two, two great guys right there. And if they want to put it on...
How did that come up with that?
If they, if they want to put it on hold.
Those people are boring.
I didn't have an issue with that. As they are, just kind of want to wait to see what happens and look at it again.
Yep. We'll... Put it out there, we'll see what they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's about all we're doing.
Does that make sense, Bob?
Yeah, I think so, just...
I don't want to say it's canceled yet.
No, I don't think we should cancel it completely, I agree. But we have to wait and see how this whole thing plays out, really.
Yeah. And we don't have a budget. We didn't budget any.
In Georgia.
Well, you know, if we're going to go ahead, you know, if it's something, you gotta say we're doing at the courthouse, Governor Collins and that kind of thing, well, we'll get, we'll get that off, if you're out.
Okay.
But I think Joel was thinking, he had in mind some weekend types stuff, like driving tours with the county. And Tom's got, their big kickoff was going to be in June with their strawberry. And something called Town or something, out at the fairgrounds. And then they had a number of things scheduled throughout, throughout the summer months. So I just, I just don't know.
Yep.
And I will, Tom didn't give me a printout at least of what they were proposing in January. I had a feeling there's something else when I was trying to get a list made. And getting interrupted, so it don't happen. There was not, there was nothing present. Sandy Hessler had sent an email about the allocation money and wanting to send a tentative meeting, secondary that we're required to have for June 2nd. We're to go ahead and schedule it. And the state may push out. The due date for all applications is June 17th.
It goes May, wasn't it?
It's June 17th.
Okay, she just needed the information by May something, I believe. There's, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're probably...
And one project that Dashler would like to do is tear down that church. The owner of the property is willing to donate it to the land bank in lieu of taxes.
Just the one, right? Like in the middle?
Right across from the library.
Yeah, across from the library.
And they owe about fifteen thousand dollars in that. And we, it's, we have, we have done that. And so we, we have a couple, couple issues that we will need to have the land bank directly in the house.
Yeah.
There's some things that just, with Emma gone, it's pretty difficult to...
I think the mattress guy, he's gonna, he's gonna fill in the mattress.
I think Matt is doing some of that too.
Who?
Matt.
Matt? Oh, him, yeah.
The King Heaven, Mr. Turner.
I think they'll, they'll get it, they'll get it, but they're...
We had, there was interest in that property in Texas. And the best thing, the best thing the land bank can do is...
Sell it.
Sell it for, for, I don't know what the value, if, if there has been a value placed...
There is interest on it? Is that the one we acquired, tore the house down? Did we tore a house down?
No.
And the owners, the other side, not adjacent, the...
No.
Is somebody different?
Not adjacent, but it's across the alley from that.
Okay.
And he took care of it last year.
Okay.
I just, I don't remember. I'll have to look up how that, what money was used to tear that down.
Oh, because it'd be too early to sell.
That was ROF money.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Sandy can't seem to find it, but...
If it was ROF money, then, then...
Pretty sure.
Check back through, through the minutes.
That would be in, in the minutes of the land bank, right?
Mm-mm. No, this is ROF for, that the, we paid out the ROF, wasn't that in one of the, like the second round? I thought it was one or two.
Oh.
It's been a while, I think. But the gentleman, if it's the same one that kept coming in, he has a rental next door? Is it the same one? Okay.
This isn't the house where the guy had to crawl in out of the window, is it? To get in and out? That was even before, that was before Glenn even got in here.
No.
That was a long, long time ago.
This was...
They tore that down, I remember.
Eighteen or nineteen, I think it was in eighteen.
This is Texas, correct? We've only...
Second Street and...
Did we only do one there? Or did we do two?
I think we got two.
Oh, one.
They tore that one down. But that, like I said, that was a, that was a long time ago. And I can't even remember how we got that tore down anymore.
I think it's the round one.
If I had to, he was...
It was really, probably was really...
For junk, yeah. Maybe he were here already, maybe...
Well, I, I remember, I think Tom started talking.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And it came up a number of times over the years.
And they couldn't, and then they couldn't find the guy that lived there. He just kind of disappeared.
Oh, but Mike interested in that property at one time, sheriff? In the very beginning? Okay, I'll look and see. I'm pretty sure it was ROF money.
My mind, yeah. If, if it is ROF money, we have much more flexibility.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I don't think it, I could be wrong though, but...
Because Emma made a comment one time, she said, the land bank can just set the value.
Yeah. Because if it's, if it's NIP money, then we have to give some of it back.
We have to wait three years.
Three years, and it certainly hasn't been...
Or sell it for fair market value. And that's like the property they've all been, there's all been the fair market value established.
Yeah.
The property in New, in New Bavaria, the people that own the house next to it are just...
Wait the three years so we can set the price. Yeah. Then all we have to do is just recoup. A little bit of, I mean, what would we set the price at?
I...
The back taxes maybe, or something like that, or?
Well, I think it was, land bank.
There's, there's no taxes on it anymore.
Yeah, because we own it, yeah.
Yeah, Chuck's not in Second Street?
Sounds right.
Yeah, that's, it was land bank. It's been demoed February 27th from center to the side lot.
But was it NIP money?
It would have been if it was land bank. But you can, um, we just wouldn't get that money.
Well, if we sell it for fair market value, do we have to give some of that back to the government then?
All of it.
All of it?
All the two hundred.
All the two hundred, okay. I knew there was a, I just didn't know what it was. I knew a stipulation on that, okay, so...
Because remember they, they appraised for a lot more than what it should have probably? And she often looked back, she had no...
And I thought she said, we could go ahead, the land bank could go ahead and set...
It was something.
Fair market value.
So who's interested in this? I mean...
The guy that lives to the, to the north.
Has he contacted you then?
It's his name, last name of color. This one.
And how many years has it been? When did we tear it down?
Um, it was in February, it said it was torn down. It was demoed, so I don't, I have to...
This year?
Yeah.
Oh.
No, nineteen, I'm sorry.
Nineteen?
Yeah.
So there's a year or three of this already.
But, but there's, it's like the gentleman's...
You'd only have to wait two more years and then we could give him a pretty good deal on it.
Oh, okay. He's the one that, one that's originally... So he didn't want to pay it off?
And then he didn't, and then he did.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure everybody's interested in a, in a good deal, you know?
Well, yeah.
Especially if you live there, I think that...
Yeah, I, we just, just need to get these out here.
Yeah.
If it has not cost, if it has cost the land bank something, we need to recover those costs. Otherwise, my feeling is, let's just get it back out.
Yeah, get them in, put their taxes there.
We don't have to, we possibly could have, we didn't complain about no maintenance on the line.
Right, right. So... Oh, I don't know. So you could call that guy and tell him, you know, if you want, if you want a, a good deal, or you have to wait another two years if you want to pay fair market value.
It looks like back in November, we approved amendment to change policy to accept sealed bids for properties instead of fair market value.
Say that again?
Approved amendment to change policy to accept sealed bid for properties instead of fair market value.
Okay. But...
That was in November.
Does that satisfy, does that satisfy the NIP? I mean, we still have to get that money back.
Well, if we, if whatever the bid is sets fair market value and they decide to pay two hundred...
Because they...
We may, we get the two hundred. And they pay closing costs, which will be maybe three hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah, right. That'd be a lot better than...
Next one is a price of six thousand.
Look at this one, Glenn. I left it here. Look at the dollars. It was seventy-five. Where'd they come up with seventy-five? There's the date.
Do it, do it. Where's the, oh, my house.
Maybe that's what they pay like in WET or...
Yeah.
Or somewhere.
But it was January fourteenth, so... See, I thought it was, the date it was disposed of, that he, he could charge eighty for that. They crossed it out.
Yeah, depends on when the work was done. Does it have something on?
They'll look at their timesheet.
Yeah, oh, yeah, timesheet, sure, 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 sure. Yeah. Well, some was in...
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I seen a couple of them like that, I think, seriously.
It's all, it's already done. It depends on, and it really depends on, people who were first out before the judge signed it or after the judge.
Very, yeah. There, yeah.
I think it was coming at 75. Okay. Oh, Bob, this name should sound familiar to you, it's Tom LoTurco. You met Tom at Pauling, at the windmill.
Okay, yeah.
He, there's an email to you and I, for Pauling County, the windmills have been a huge event for them, huge. And the commissioners wanted to kind of, you know, show off a little bit, and invited commissioners surrounding in the state of Ohio, and went over for lunch, and then we had a seater. We got to see a wind turbine that the blades were still on the ground, it was...
It was an interesting trip.
65 meter blade.
Yeah.
We could look in the head side of it, also the nacelle that's up on top was still on the ground. And so we got to head and climb up on seater to be able to see inside of it. They had one seater tower up, and I don't remember what size it was, but they were bringing in...
What is it?
A crane that was going to take them.
Oh, Jaffa.
I thought they said...
Yeah, Jaffa.
And they were going, and they were...
They're probably going to wear them when they go out, if they have to go out.
So they were going to assemble them and bring them, and then the crane would pick it up.
I'm sure they'll be...
Set it, set it to light. But anyway, what this has to do with, just a bit of background, this Thomas LoTurco is with...
He was that engineer, wasn't he?
What's that?
He was that engineer, wasn't he?
He's the director of development in eastern US and Canada.
Oh, okay.
You know, he was the one we talked about with, you know, come talk to us in Henry County.
He was, was he sitting by us on the bus?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And so we finally thought we were swapping back, and he would like, he would like to come to talk to us. And I emailed him back, and I said, "Wonderful, we want to talk to you." And we have, I said, "Probably wait until mid-May, see how things are shaking out here."
Yeah, yeah.
And Christie, I, in the email said to contact you to set up a time. And he doesn't necessarily, I would, when you talk to him, if he's insistent about coming here, find out where he's been traveling.
Okay.
And we don't necessarily, at least in the initial conversation, de-tact him here. If he has a PowerPoint presentation, he can email it, and then this one will put it up on the screen, or probably, but then we should have down the Zoom or whatever, and we can do video.
Yeah.
So, okay. The last thing is, I mentioned, and I want this on the public record, is that in the County Commissioners Association Board meeting, we were offered the opportunity to use OSU Extension's Zoom account, and to help in our county communication, and so forth. And so that's going to be an option. It seems like Zoom has just, Zoom has just become the de facto standard right now. There's other good programs out there, but if we, my thought is, is if we have access to Zoom, we might as well use theirs. And just, we're paying indirectly, we're paying for it. We still have $45,000 of our money, as of now.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
It's true.
Yeah. And I thought it was a wonderful offer, because they, and OSU Extension has been a great partner for decades with County Commissioners Association, they're very responsible. We have access to the top echelon of leadership within the counties of food, agricultural science. They don't hesitate, if we need to talk, they don't hesitate coming to the County Commissioners meeting, or making themselves available as they can, even right down there at the county level. So we've got a great relationship, and I thought it was a wonderful offer. I emailed Laura Roth in the Earth's Rock, because I was, we were told in the conference yesterday that our local OSU Extension people would know the deal. So I emailed Laura and Garth, and Laura emailed me back and said she would give me a call after 11:00. So we'll see what the, see what the deal is.
Yeah.
And maybe instead of trying to go off and do something maybe a little bit different, let's just, because over here, we're comfortable with using it. I don't know how far this can stretch out, if this is just county government. Tracy told me, before I came over here, that Mark was running out of timing on this. But I think it's been, the way Mark has been doing that, has been good, and I think it works very well, so.
Gwen O'Gaver said our lines are full, so she had to go on. You too.
Oh, did she?
I'll say hi to Gwen.
Hey, Gwen. Yeah, that, and that is also something that we need to discover. We have, through our home carrier, we have 15 connections provided, we can up that. And as we're kind of experimenting with this stuff, we found out. Well, and also there's a conference going on next door in the EOC, that had used some of that. Okay, wondering, if there's nothing else to come before the Board of Henry County Commissioners, hearing nothing, would there be a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Christie?
Jeff Myers?
Yes.
Bob Hessler?
Yes.
Gwen Moore?
Yes, we are adjourned at 10:22 a.m.